I will call the Blackstone Millville Regional School District's School Committee Meeting for July 12th to order. If we could stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we will start with an introduction of members.
Amanda Gilmain from Millville.
Tammy Lemieux, Blackstone.
Erin Vinoco, Millville.
Tim Hall, Blackstone.
Carrie Goddett, Blackstone.
Sarah Williams, Blackstone.
And I'm Jane Reggio from Millville.
Matt Aronworth, Assistant Superintendent.
Jason DeFalco, Superintendent.
Thank you, everyone. Jane is joining remotely tonight. I'm looking for a motion for Consent Agenda A warrants minutes of meeting for June 23rd.
So moved. Second?
Moved by Sarah.
Second. Amanda.
Do we need another second? I think.
We are both not here.
We're both not here. So it's second by Carrie. Thank you. Just in case, I think it might just be the motion, but. All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
No abstain.
Tammy abstain. Okay, and we have public forum on the agenda, but being that there's no one here, I will keep moving. School committee items, actually, I'd like to move our evaluation for the superintendent to the end of the agenda, if everyone is okay with that. That way we can transition nicely into our executive session. Is that okay with everybody?
Sure.
So Jason, report of the superintendent.
Excellent. Thanks. Good evening, everybody. Nice to see you. We have just a few quick items under my report this evening. First, I just want to do a brief update on summer programming. We have officially started a few of our programs, and we have a few that will be beginning very soon. So I just want to run through a quick update in terms of enrollment. In your packets, you have the initial summer programming overview information that we had sent forward. I think it was sometime in June, perhaps, end of May-June. And it outlined each of the programs that we're going to be offering, the program focus and the dates. And what we added to it for this evening's update was just the enrollment and some of the focus skills, which I thought would be important. So I'm not going to read through all this, but I just wanted to touch upon a couple of highlights. We had our very small subgroup of our extended school year, ESY. Programs start today. Tomorrow's the big, you can see Ms. PG in the back there, tomorrow's the big kickoff, so we're excited about that. We have about 86 students enrolled this year for our ESY program. And we know that much of the work in terms of the instruction is driven by the student's IEP, Individual Education Plan. And that will be running until August 19th. The work with the Boys and Girls Club, as the committee and the community know, we're very excited about that work, has launched. And we had our staff beginning with the Boys and Girls Club on Monday, June 28th. So they've been at it for a few weeks already. We have about 150 Blackstone Millville students participating. And you'll notice, we left the focus skills open there because frankly, we're reorganizing them. We learned a lot about the program itself and wanted to kind of restructure how, after we've kind of watched it run for a week, we wanted to restructure how we're packaging the actual learning activities for the students. So I will be meeting with the team again next week to go through some of the logistics. But it's okay. We are adaptable and we make it work. We learned students are assigned to different zones, but they don't have to stay in those zones. So we are tasked with making sure things are innovative and creative enough to get the students to want to stay and compete with fishing and the pool and other things, so.
So they can check out of your zone.
They can, yes. So we have worked very hard to find different ways of doing some of the creative things we were already thinking of doing, so that we can retain the students, one of which, so parents, if you're listening, is sending home to families the different activities that we're doing, so they can encourage their youngster to stay in our zone and participate in some of our activities. We also have ordered some different prize box kinds of things that we thought the kids would really like. So, you know, like that Subway sandwich after you eat your fourth one, the fifth one's free kind of thing. After, you know, you do a couple of activities, you can go to the prize box. So we're just trying to make it fun for the students. So we intentionally left that blank because we're reorganizing our focus skills there. Our program for our elementary school students, the committee and community, I'm sure remembers that we were awarded $173,000 21st Century Learning Center grant. So I know Dr. Remka's here this evening, too, if there are any questions about that, but we're super excited. It's the first time that we've been awarded a 21st CCLC grant. And we have 125 students enrolled. If you remember, we talked in the spring a bit about students at the Boys and Girls Club that would also want to participate at the JFK AFM MES Elementary Program, which is now the 21st Century, and that we would shuttle the students back and forth. So we are, we have 26 students that attend the Boys and Girls Club that also want to participate or will be participating in the 21st Century Program, which will be starting on July 19th. And we have the shuttle bus set up and is staffed, so that we can zip the bus over and pick up the students at the Boys and Girls Club, run them over to the complex, and then zip them back when we're done. So we're really excited about just getting some of those logistics out of the way. You will notice that I did include in the table all of the focus skills for math and EOA. And again, I'm not going to read through all these, but these are really important because we worked with our teachers to make sure we identified what are the three skills in math and literacy the students need in order to be able to enter into that grade level successfully. You know, with the kind of coming out of the last year's, you know, remote hybrid learning model, we're really focused on acceleration and making sure that we're narrowing any instructional gaps for students. So we're starting with our focus on these three areas. Our summer programs are focused on these three areas, and we're going to make sure that when we launch into the year, our students are ready. So you'll see what those incoming skills look like. We thought it might be helpful if you're wondering, like, oh, what is it that they're actually doing during that time? Like, what are the kids focusing on? So those are the skills that we're working on. And these came right from our teachers during their professional learning community meetings with our instructional coaches collaborating with them. Moving along to our middle school program, we have about 15 students enrolled in the enrichment program, and we have 30 students enrolled in the credit recovery program. And again, those focus skills, I didn't break them down by grade six, seven, eight, we just clustered them together, because frankly, there is some overlap across grade levels. But these are the skills that we are focusing on for middle schools. We have about 45 middle school youngsters enrolled. For the high school, we have 15 enrolled in the enrichment and 20 enrolled in the credit recovery. I should mention, too, that credit recovery courses have already started, and they're starting with the adults tomorrow. So remember, we talked a little bit about the Edge of Seer platform and how if our kids didn't necessarily make it, you know, on a virtual model during the school year, we wouldn't expect them to do it over the summer either. So tomorrow, they actually will start with the teachers. And we have our transportation all set up that was coordinated through Matt's office, so we're really pleased about that as well. And we listed the skills there, too, so you could get a sense of what those skills are. So currently, we have 440 students enrolled in summer programming, and that is before the Acceleration Academy. So the Acceleration Academy is a grant that we were awarded, it's $36,000, to run almost like a kind of launching the school year a week early for these particular grade levels, kindergarten first and second with a focus on literacy, and grades three, four, eight, and 10 with a focus on math. So we have not included those students in that number yet. But that's a pretty significant number of students, and we're running eight different summer programs, all included. So, yeah, so we've done a lot of work there. And I know Jill will give us an update on the social worker piece in a few minutes, as we're still in the midst of our search for that. But we do have our plans, our plans all in place for our students that need that, what we called was tier-three supports. And our current counseling staff has divided up those students and are working with those students and families. So we have moved forward with those plans as well.
Jason, do we know if any of these 430 students are students that had been fully remote last year?
We do have that information. And some of the students, I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but some of the students were full remote students.
Excellent.
That's a great question, Jane, and I'm glad you asked, because for the Acceleration Academy, that will run for five hours a day the week before school starts, that Monday through Friday. And again, that was that $36,000 grant that we got from the state to run that. We are identifying first, children that were full remote. When we look at the younger grade levels or the transition grades, you know, we've had dozens of children that haven't been in a classroom, either in a new building yet, right? So if you're an incoming 10th grader, or if you were a full remote kindergarten student that has transitioned into first grade. One of the things I should mention with that, too, in meeting with Principal Schaefer last week, and again, I just want to share this because I think it's important for the committee and the community to know, the level of work that's happening right now. We've already set up our literacy intervention groups for the fall, for specifically the incoming first grade students. That's really important to know, because we think about the interventionists that we've added. So we already have our sight word influency groups set up, we already have our letter recognition groups and letter sound groups set up. Like, we actually could tell you who the kids are, the groups are set and we're ready to go. So we will be looking at those students, Jane, to the other part, to kind of write to your question for the Acceleration Academy, to get them involved, so that at least we can get them rolling a week sooner.
Yeah. Get the comfort back.
That's right.
Is it too late to sign a child up?
No.
Obviously, some of them have already started, but the Jump Start, Summer Enrichment, and the Acceleration Academy?
It is not too late. We haven't started the Acceleration Academy enrollment, so if our parents who are listening, we will put out the information to our families, but by all means, let us know. And the only part that might be tricky is the transportation, because we've already established a lot of the routes, but I get the sense we might be able to add, you know, kids to those routes already. But that would be the only thing. So if you're interested and you're listening, make sure to reach out.
Will you be sending out, like, one more reminder, or is it?
So we were planning on doing the additional recruitment notification for the Acceleration Academy.
Okay.
I don't believe we were planning on sending out anything else for the other summer programs, just because we've done quite a bit of phone calls and emails on that.
Great. Any other questions? Tammy?
I just wanted to confirm, for credit recovery, do we usually provide transportation for summer school?
No.
Okay. So this is just this year?
We're doing it this year.
Because, okay. I just wanted to make, clarify that for folks out there, that this is a year where we have different monies available, and that that is not avail, may not be available in the future.
Moving forward. Yeah, we're doing everything we can to.
That is a great benefit that is not usually.
Right. Still unprecedented times.
What's that?
It's still unprecedented times where we have that money to provide that.
I just want to duly note it for the future.
Great point. And we're using the ESAR funds to help cover the transportation costs. We want to make sure that we have every barrier out of the way.
Sure.
Any other questions on, just again, just wanted to give a brief update, so the community had a sense of where we are with our summer programming.
No, I think, I just want to say that I think you and leadership have done a great job on this. I mean, this is very robust, and I'm really excited that hopefully we can, you know, we heard a lot of parents talking about how, you know, learning loss, and we all agree on that. And hopefully, those same parents are stepping up and signing their kid up for these things to take advantage of what we've, you know, what we're doing to try to remediate any learning loss that happened. So thank you for that, to everyone involved.
Jane, any other comments?
Sorry.
Nope, I'm good.
And it's just important to note, too, all of this is at no cost. So no cost for transportation, we're feeding the children, and all the instructional materials are at no cost.
And just to, are students wearing masks this summer or not?
Yes. Yes, students are wearing masks this summer. So the Department of Education, the commissioner specifically, sent out a clarifying statement, I want to say it was late June, making sure that superintendents knew masks are expected in summer program for the summer.
That's interesting, because our latest MASC flyer says that we should be reviewing to update that.
So the first memo we got in first?
I just got that today, so I don't know if anybody else saw it, but I actually said to Jenny on the way in, you know, we haven't talked about that, but, okay, so.
The first communication to superintendents on a Zoom meeting with the commissioner was that they were not required. It would be a local decision. We got an email that, that was a Wednesday, the Saturday evening, clarifying that, saying, no, masks are required through the summer for summer programming, but in the fall, they will not be. Something magic is happening September 1st.
I just can't, I, you know how aggravating that is. It's like, tomorrow, we don't have to wear them, but today we do. I just can't take it.
Under 12 was still.
I do, I do think that is going to be detrimental to our efforts here, because we're all sitting here not wearing a mask, and I don't, there were a lot of non-believers or whatever. And I, you know, when you're talking about 90-degree heat and sending a kid into a school building, I think that will, that will be a bigger detriment than a bus.
They were not committed.
In my opinion.
To the mask piece. Yeah, they weren't committed to saying, one way or the other for the unvaccinated students, but they, they thought at most, there would be limited masking, but they weren't sure about that. So there was a non-commitment to really anything. At the end of June, anyhow.
Okay. We'll definitely have to talk about that in August, to make sure that we are opening on the same page.
We can go to Walmart, but not school.
The BMR High School Content Lead Teacher MOA, if we could just table that for the August 5th meeting. I want to make sure that the teachers have a chance to actually get together and meet on that. We had anticipated that they may be able to, but unfortunately, they weren't able to. So we just would like to give them a little more time. So we'll see that again on the August 5th School Committee Agenda. The third item is something we are looking to do to offer our educators a opportunity for a little more preparation time. So as you just heard from our summer update, we have over 400 children participating in summer programming. We are collecting information in terms of all the standards that are listed here, what students mastered and didn't master by the end of the summer. In addition, we have our preliminary MCAS data that we always do, and our STAR data that we always have. But we actually want to give teachers time to look at the identified three standards in English and math in advance, triangulate that data, and actually give them an opportunity across grade levels to start some planning. We're not stepping into a normal school year. It doesn't matter how we frame it. There's a lot of different work that has to be done in terms of preparing for this, if we really mean we're trying to accelerate and close the gaps that our students are entering with. So we did have a conversation with Unit A about offering an optional planning day. And so that would be scheduled for the Monday from 8:00 to 2:00 before the Tuesday that we would begin. So we actually start our first day with staff on Tuesday, August 31st. So we were looking at offering an optional paid planning day on the 30th. And what we would do to prepare for that is our instructional coaches would actually bundle the classroom data for each teacher. So they would get all the students that are on that teacher's list, they'd pull all the summer data, they'd pull all the EOI data from STAR, end-of-year data from STAR, and the preliminary MCAS data that we have, specifically as it relates to these entry standards, if you will, and actually give teachers time as a fourth-grade team, a fifth-grade team, the English department at the high school to sit down and say, okay, with the information we have with the students who are in front of us, how do we actually prepare to enter the students into this particular unit of instruction? So there will be some time for that in the two days that we have before the students return. But again, just because of the nuances that this year is going to bring to us, it's just not enough. We can't require it, because the teachers start the Tuesday, the 31st, but we thought it would be something that we could offer as an optional piece for staff. Collectively, if we had all 150 Unit A members join, if everybody opted in, at the six hours, at the $35 an hour, it was $31,000, which we could charge to one of the ESAR grants. Matt has already identified some room for that, probably an ESAR III, that we could, we could make the space for that. And that's assuming everybody participated. I don't imagine that they would, but I'm not entirely sure.
What about, like, so what, at the elementary level, that sounds great, you have your, you know, and maybe even middle school level. But at the high school level, how would that work, actually, at all levels, how would that work for the art teacher, the music teacher? You know, like, what are we doing, what would we do to make sure that that was worth the money and time on their part?
Yeah. That's a great question. So I think one of the things that's going to be really important is that all of the enrichment teachers are, they have to be on board with this. So we can't operate in the place of, that's, those are your kids, these are my kids, I only have to worry about this, you have to worry about that. I want to make sure that even the enrichment teachers, if they're able to participate, at least have a general understanding of what the data is, what it's telling us, how the kids are doing with it, and where, where would they have opportunities to plug into that. So I wouldn't necessarily expect, you know, say, a health teacher, if it's a ed teacher, to sit down with the English team. But what I would expect is that the English and health teacher, if it's something they opted to do, they would have their class rosters, they would have that data available to them, and they could start looking for ways to help meet some of the objectives that we have listed on the focus skills. So it's not like they're developing a cross-curricular unit or anything like that.
Who's leading them, I guess, you know?
The coaches and the principals would be working with that.
So they would just join the other group.
Any other questions for Jason on that? Jane, did you have any questions?
I do not. Thank you.
So you need an approval for us to offer that, correct?
Yes.
So I'm looking for a motion for the optional professional day? Tim, so moved by Tim?
Second.
Second by Tammy. Any other discussion or questions? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Great. Thank you. The last item on my report is just, I need approval for a new job description for the 21st Century Site Coordinator, and Jenny is here if anybody wants, if they have specific questions for Dr. Remka. But essentially, part of the grant, it's required that we have a coordinator to facilitate the grant, because there's a lot of work that goes into, not just the development of the programming, but also the monitoring and what is called a SAO survey, which is basically measuring outcomes as a result of the program, student outcomes. And so we drafted a list of responsibilities that the coordinator for the 21st Century Site Program would do, and would like the committee to review and approve the job description for the coordinator. I will also say that there is no cost to our local budget. This all comes out of the 21st Century Grant, so it's all part of the grant budget.
So this is a requirement of the grant?
Yes, we have to have a coordinator.
So is this going to be additional job duties for someone, or are you looking for a new person to join the staff?
This will be additional job duties for somebody internally, because it's an after-school program, so it will be most likely one of our, my sense is, most likely one of our Unit A educators that would be able to help Dr. Remka facilitate the 21st Century Program. And we would post, you'll notice, Jane, I think you brought it up, there's a lot of acronyms.
There's a lot, yeah. There's a lot of, like, what are they actually doing?
Yeah, it's like Edge of Speed kind of stuff. So, you know, our sense was this would be posted internally, because Dr. Remka had a group of staff that helped her develop the grant. So the teachers are well aware of this coming online.
And what timeframe do we have to implement this?
So we are starting our first day on July 19th. So this was one of those grants you apply for, and they tell you at the end of June if you're going to get it. And then at the beginning of July, they say, congratulations, you have two weeks to get your program up and running. So Dr. Remka was able to do that, mainly because we had already started the planning, if you remember, through all the ESAR. So we just transitioned a lot of that over to 21st Century. So we will be starting this, the summer version, on the 19th of July, and then we'll start the after-school program in the fall.
Any other questions? So will this person be present at the after-school program?
Yes. Yeah, they'll facilitate it, so that Dr. Remka's not managing, or she'll be overseeing the facilitator, but she's not running the program.
And then, Jason, the last point of this, says attend statewide coordinated meetings and trainings. When, if a sub is needed, is that money also come out of the grant?
Yes, we'll charge the grant. Yep. Dr. Remka, do you want to speak to?
Part of the, part of the grant, there is a professional development in the budget, and so that those, you know, attending the training will be paid out of that, and also going to the training, the fee will be paid out of the grant.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
All right, so I'm looking for a motion to approve the 21st Century Learning Program Coordinator Job Description as provided, and that's moved by Tim. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Carrie. Any other discussion or questions for Jason or Dr. Remka? Jane, any questions?
Nope.
I just don't want to forget you over there.
I'll speak up, don't worry.
Okay. All right, so all those in favor of the job description as posted to us?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, unanimous, thank you.
Thank you. That concludes my report. Thanks, Dr. Remka.
All right, and we'll be moving to Matt, report of the business office, the entire reason we're here on a Monday.
Absolutely. And I will try not to get used to this going early in the meeting, so in case we shift back, it'll be too hard of a disappointment, letdown for me. So if you look in your package, you do have a closeout preliminary projection sheet. This is very similar to the sheet that we reviewed at the last meeting, explaining the E and D, the current balance, where the funds are from the general fund. If you look, there's a green line across the kind of left center of the sheet, which has where E and D is currently estimated. And right below that is the summary of the various fund lines, or I would say, should say, the fund groupings, those of thousands, two thousands, three thousands. That summary comes from the bottom of the analysis sheet that we go over regularly. Instead of reviewing it item by item, I just put the summary here, since we're looking at it more big picture today. The purpose for the Monday meeting, to close out the books for FY '21, we just need to balance the amounts that are in those different fund groupings. So as you can see, there's some surplus in some funds and some deficits in other funds. And I have indicated on the recommended motions to transfer some funds from one bucket to another, just to make sure that everything is balanced out as we close the books on FY '21. Any questions about your mo?
Tammy?
No, I'm just thinking, just looking.
Yeah, sure. So Matt, the current E and D plus the current available balance?
Now, that total, that total E and D currently estimated is the total that I'd be estimating for next, for, to close out this year with. It's not adding to the balance. That includes the balance. So I don't know if you recall, so that line is made up of three different lines. It's the ending balance up at the top, the total of unbudgeted revenue, which is right above the green line, and then the total of unexpended, unencumbered appropriation. which is right above the green line, and then the total of unexpended, unencumbered appropriation. So that leaves the total that's highlighted in that E and D estimation. And if you look from the general fund, the total available balance is at the bottom on the right. So you can see, despite moving some funds from one bucket to another, we're fine with respect to the, where we're landing in the general fund.
Okay. So the next page that everybody has is, are they movements we need to do to the motions, Matt?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
So you can see, I didn't want to overstate it. You can see in the summary where the red lines are, and we just need to move from some.
So we'll be balancing every red line?
Yep, exactly.
Can I just, I'm sorry, on the E and D, so it's made up of these three lines. And then, once this moves, we already have the other E and Ds. This doesn't include what's in there as of this minute?
It does.
It does, okay.
So this is just, this is just an estimate. An E and D actually won't get certified till some point next year for the FY '21 E and D. But it's based on where we stand right now, which is the ending balance, the unbudgeted revenue and the unexpended and encumbered balances as well. So that, in the green line, that's the total of what I estimate E and D to be certified at for when we get it certified next year.
Next January.
Matt needs to speak up a little bit, please.
I'm sorry, Jane, I was saying, the green line that's on the sheet is the total of what I'm estimating E and D to be at when it gets certified next year.
Next year, yep, I got that. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions about the preliminary projections? So we'll move to the next page, which are the motions, is that okay, Matt?
Yep, absolutely.
You wanted here? That's part of the closeout. So I'm looking for a motion for the general fund. In order to balance expenses in the general fund, I move to transfer $300,000 from the 3,000 series, Other Student Services, to the 4,000 series, Maintenance.
They'll move.
Thank you, Jane.
I'll second.
Tammy, second. Any questions on that motion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Thank you. And the next motion we're looking for is, further move to transfer $15,000 from the 2,000 series Instructional to the 1,000 series Administration, and $5,000 from the 2,000 series to the 5,000 series Benefits and Leased Equipment.
I so move.
Moved by Tim, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Amanda. Any questions or discussion?
I just have a general question. Do we just, Matt, are we just using like rounded numbers just so that gives you a little movement?
Just to make sure that everything is in the positive.
Okay, okay, thank you, I forget that, but, all right, got it.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Unanimous, thank you. And the last is special revenue funds. I move to transfer the balances of the following special revenue funds to the general fund, Medicaid, $122,081, and interest, $1,894. Anyone want to make that motion?
Second.
Sarah, and second by Carrie. Any questions or comments?
On here, it says $122,071. On the vote, it says $81. Does that matter?
I would have to go back into the system, and it shouldn't ma, it shouldn't matter.
The $10 will just get.
The $10, yeah. If, it could be that that was a fund balance that I recorded it off of, and there may have been like $10 in that fund from, from a previous fiscal year. So I run the fund balances at the end and transfer that, that money. If you would like, I can pull it up while we're speaking.
I just, I mean, I would think it would match.
I think if it was a $10 negative, we'd have a problem, but it's a surplus, right? It will just be, it will make the E and D $10 higher if, if that is the.
And the Medicaid, the Medicaid fund can be in the negative. And quite honestly, if the Medicaid fund were to be in the negative, they'd offset it with the E and D anyway, so it all really balances out. It's just a matter of transferring the majority of that Medicaid revenue into the general fund.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Do you want him to pull it up, Tammy?
No, I just, I, I thought we were trying to move what's on this thing, and the numbers don't match. So like, so the interest on here is $1,894. On here, it's, interest is listed as $10,000.
It's in various, it's in various funds. In fact, the bulk of the interest is already in the general fund. So that's showing, that top piece is showing revenues, not necessarily split across the funds that they're going into. So you can see Medicaid is in there also, it's not.
We're just not using the full $10,000.
Correct.
Using $1,894 to balance, is that correct?
Okay, sorry, I just thought these were matching, okay. I'm done, sorry.
Okay, any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that's unanimous.
The next piece of my report is personnel updates. I can start before I let Jill PG jump in. I can say that we have already appointed a groundskeeper, the .75 groundskeeping position. Robert McEnulty has been appointed to that position and has already been starting on the upkeep of the fields and watching over the beginning of some of the projects that we have going on, making sure that they're getting lined up so that everything is in order for the upcoming seasons. With respect to the Director of Facilities, we have interviewed, just today, we actually had finalist interviews, and I will be speaking to Dr. DeFalco, and we will be moving a finalist forward for his review. And hopefully, we will have someone in place by the beginning of August. And the social worker position, I will, oh, I'm sorry, questions?
Can you just speak a little louder, Jane's having a lot of trouble.
I apologize.
That's okay.
I was saying, for the groundskeeper position, Robert McEnulty has been appointed to the .75 groundskeeping position.
I heard that part.
And we also have been interviewing for the Director of Facilities. We had finalist interviews today, and the committee recommended an individual to move to Dr. DeFalco for an interview for the position. And the hope is that we will have that position filled and somebody starting by August 1st.
Thank you.
Any questions for Matt on personnel before we move to the social worker? I have one. Would we be able to get before the next meeting, like, not with the next packet, but we haven't gotten the actual spreadsheet of the personnel? I think we all know there's been a lot of movement in general, but we haven't gotten it for the last two meetings, so maybe you were waiting for positions to be filled. But just so we even know what is vacant, so when there are job postings and people say, wait, and, you know, right now, I don't know some of them, but I'm sure.
Yeah, we withheld because by the time we were printing these reports and trying to get them out to the committee, there was still a ton of transition happening, and we're putting all of the information together. But we do have those lists, and I will make them available prior to the next meeting.
Maybe just in a weekly update even, just so we're up to speed with how the year ended and what we're looking for for.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And Tammy, I know you've mentioned this a few times. So we have done exit interviews with educators that have left. So we do, we do have some data on that.
Good, I think that's really important.
Yep, I've done them myself, which has been really helpful.
Sorry. It's like moving, it's like moving Flat Stanley around in your family.
Gently moving Jane. All right, sorry, Matt, you're still on.
No, unless there are other questions regarding the two positions I mentioned, the groundskeeper and the Director of Facilities.
I think it's good news that we already have someone starting, started, and finalists that met our rigid job descriptions.
Joe, social worker?
Sure, so I would love to be able to say we have a district social worker.
I'm just going to speak for Jane and ask you to speak up a little bit, too. I'm just going to guess.
With the microphone right there, blast the crowd, but, so we do not, as of this point, still have a district social worker. We're hoping that this next posting will, you know, bring a new crop in. I think we're on our third round of postings. So we're on to Plan D. And our Plan D is, we have actually, I've reached out to, as Dr. DeFalco mentioned, current staff that we have, whether they're school adjustment counselors or counselors, and we're going to divide and conquer. So we're looking at bringing on enough staff so we can look at secondary as a group because, again, we've already identified the schools, the principals, the counselors before the end of the year, already identified all of our families and our kiddos. So we have those names. So I already do have some staff there interested, I'm hoping to bring on one more. So we're really able to split up those kids better. The good thing is, some of our kids, I think, are attending some of our summer programs, so we already have some relationships, you know, built there. But we're working on some of those kids who families have chosen not to participate. So, you know, we're going to continue to outreach them on a regular basis. So our Plan D is, we're still going to support our kids with the current staff we have now, but we're not stopping our search. So once we get that out and we get more candidates, I'll be reaching out to our team that came together to kind of look at some and make some decisions and continue to move forward. I'm hoping the next time we come, we're going to say yes, we're moving forward and found a candidate. That would be the plan, but right now, you know, we haven't found that person. We do want to make sure it's, you know, it's a good fit for our district, and it's the person who comes with us with skills, who, you know, the skills we're looking for. That job description, too, is, is rather lengthy.
And I know I asked last time, are we missing something? Are we not attracting the right person to the, to apply? Is it?
So it's interesting because I meet with the directors in the area. We, we met like every couple of weeks during the year. And there are some districts who are putting out some feelers for a position similar to this. I think right now, it is rather a unique position. We're not looking for, you know, a counselor within the school or a school adjustment. We're looking for someone more globally to do those types of things. I do think there's a person out there. I think we found initially the person we were looking for. It just didn't kind of pan out the way we were hoping. So, I mean, we did have, you know, several applicants in both rounds, so we're hoping that this will, the third time will be the charm, that's what we're hoping for.
I think the challenge is, and I say this respectfully, but we're competing against school year positions. So we're looking for a 12-month person. And I'm holding like, I'm holding strong to that because it's like, we need that year-round position.
Agreed.
Is the salary, right.
It's appropriate.
Effective of that?
Oh, sure, you know, it's appropriate, yeah. But it's, it's hard to, you know, if we were posting for a high school adjustment counselor, which, which we did, actually, and we had dozens of applicants, but we post for this and we get this small group because I work, you know, 12 if I can work 10. You know, respectfully, but, so we're up against that, which is, which is hard.
In that, are there candidates that applied for the adjustment counselor that would, looking at their resume, could they be considered for this social worker position? And if so, have we reached out to them?
Yes, and excellent question. And we're losing them at the 12-month piece. They want the July and on the summer. That was where we lost our last finalist, where she was fabulous. We were ready to bring her on, she met with the leadership team, she went through the interview screen, she took a 10-month position at a lower pay, but she wants, you know, she wants to be home.
And we think of this position, our kids, you know, we want them, the summer is a really critical time.
That's when we need them the most.
We do.
Arguably.
You know, for the families, for the kids. We do have some families that struggle, that the kids home, you know, all summer long without that school structure, so. So we're going to, we're, you know, it's reopened, we're going to look again and see if we have candidates that. And we do have, I've been putting a lot of feelers out to other area, you know, schools, directors, programs, just to see if there's anyone who's in that school-based program that wants to make a jump, do you know what I mean, to be more in that leadership level.
Thank you for your continued efforts.
Yes, thank you very much.
The last piece under my report is the surplus disposal. You have in your package a request from Ms. Kurt Hoard.
Are we going to really let when the legends die, die? Is that what we're saying? From 1979, we're going to let it go? 1982, 83.
I just wonder how many of our names are signed in the front of any of these books? Using it for that school year?
That is hilarious.
That is really funny.
And were they really using these in the last few years?
Hopefully not.
Not last year, we had amplified.
This is true. I'm glad she's cleaning out.
Yeah.
More of a storage issue than a curriculum one at this point.
I move to, oh, God, do you need to?
I was going to say, do we need a motion? So Tammy is.
I'm going to move to discard the provided list of old textbooks at the middle school.
A motion made by Tammy and second by Tim. Any questions or comments? Or would anyone like to claim any of these? Will we pay for the weight of disposing? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, that's unanimous, thank you. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Any last minute? You're good?
No.
So we did already have our public forum, but I'm not sure if, if you're here to speak, you can definitely come up, introduce yourself, please, name and your address.
My name is Jill Darling, I live on Miller Street in Blackstone and 49 Miller Street. And my daughter is entering the fifth grade. And I'm also a clinical social worker that works with children. So I get to see firsthand the impact this pandemic has had on children, their mental health, their, you know, physical health, their social emotional development. And I'm basically here as a, well, on both levels. But I just want to make sure that, I understand that technology, we had to get creative with, like, education. You know what I mean? But it's my hope that we're going to be pulling back on a lot of this technology because the way that, especially at the lower levels, because the way it has, it just impacts the families, it impacts the students. They don't, they become addicted to these things. You know, they, it, it increases, it's a constant dopamine release in their brain. And they just, you know, they, there's nothing that will stimulate them as well. So it's, it's a, it's a fight to get them off it. And I just, and I just feel like so many parents, they're just unaware of this. And we can't, we can't change the way people do things in their homes or anything like that. But I feel like, well, as a district, you know what I mean? As a school, we have, we have an obligation to step, you know, pull back on this and help it the way, the best way we can. Now, my daughter tells me she's one of three students that does not have a cellphone at the elementary level. And it breaks my heart as a person. But I mean, I mean, can we at least instill like, okay, no, these children should not have, bring these things to school because, I mean, the kids are on the bus and I, to socialize. It's an opportunity for them to build their social skills. And, you know, it's just, I see their inability to develop frustration tolerance, all these things, it's just, it's, it's just such a wide, wide range. And it's concerning for me as a parent for, as I, I understand our culture has changed. Our culture is way different now. But I just, I just have to advocate for this area. I'm very passionate about it, and I just hope that, you know, you can see my point of view and to, to help any way that you can. you can, you know? I guess that really.
Are we, we, are the elementary classes going to be taking their Chrome? I know we have one-to-one for everyone now. Are they using them just in school, the Chromebooks? Or are they taking them home for, do we know?
Yeah, I think we had said if the students needed the Chromebook for something with homework, they would be able to take it home on that particular evening. But if it wasn't a homework assignment, they would use the, we have like our cart, Chromebook carts that the kids would plug them into and lock them up in the, in the classroom overnight. We just want to make sure if the teacher assigned something, that's, that they would have access to it in case.
So, as most of the, at the elementary level, I don't, really not too familiar what goes on in the middle school, which obviously I'll figure that out as I get there. But at the elementary level, so is it, the children are like, supposed to do all their work on it during the school year? Like, I know towards the end of school, there was a lot of that going on. And I just feel like these kids need like books because what happens is they, they have like, you know, okay, they're tempted to go, to go to a different page. And, and I mean, they're children. They are children. And then they get, they get, you know, shamed and they get reprimanded. I'm like, you know, how can you blame them? I, you know? So, I just feel like you're just setting them up for like failure, especially children, say, children with, you know, IEPs and need special, you know, types of things, you know? I just.
So, we do have all the, we do have all of the workbooks and activity books that go with each of our, each of our programs for English, math, science. Our science program is a total lab-based program, STEM scopes. So, they do a lot of labs. I think a lot of it was electronic this past year. But as far as, you know, if it's any indicator, we bought a hard copy book for every student this summer because we wanted them with a book in their hand.
Oh, that's so good to hear. And I do hear, and I do appreciate all your efforts that you're trying to, you know, put into this, you know, the impact that pandemic has had, like on their academics and all that. So, thank you.
Yeah, no, sure. So, it is important that kids have materials in their, in their hand for sure without.
Okay, so what about like the whole, like, is there any way you could be like, okay, well, I don't know about the middle school level, but at least at the elementary level, like, children should not have the, bring these cellphones into the school because they're going to be tempted to use them on the bus. And they're going to be tempted to use them in school because that's just the nature of that, where they are developmentally, you know what I mean? And, you know, it's just, like I said, it's just that, is there anything that?
So, there is a handbook that Dr. Remka is sitting right behind you. If you know, she's.
She's ready to pounce.
But she can speak to the, to the handbook. But phones do need to be often put away, you know, during the day. They can't have them out.
But they.
But to say you can't, it's, you know, I hate to say this, but phones are like the new gum. Like, it's, you know.
Yeah, I.
It's hard to, because some parents, so as many, as many of us as parents don't want their kids to have them, other parents want them to have them.
I understand that. And I know I'll get that. I understand that. I just wish, I just wish more parents understood what it's hap, what, you know? I have to, you know?
And we don't have a lot of issues, kids using, really, like last year, I didn't even have any incidents.
Well, I guess coming from my perspective, where my daughter is one of three who doesn't have one on the bus and, you know, and she's feeling like she's like a, you know, like an outcast. And it's just, you know?
I don't know if it, if, I mean, does she feel like it's one of three? Or are you certain of that? I mean, I, my child was in middle school last year and I waited as long as possible to, to give that to him because, but obviously it is a parental.
Right, and I understand that. But I just feel like while on the bus, like, okay, let's talk to our friends.
They would say, everyone has one except for me. But who's everyone?
Let's not play video games on the bus and talk to our friends, you know? Like, this is the time to do it, you know? I don't know.
I understand.
So, I had to, I had, I wouldn't have felt right if I didn't come speak.
I feel like Jenny might want to add something for you though, so.
No, I, when, when we were talking about using the Chromebook in the classroom, we do understand some children like to use the Chromebook, but some children like to have a workbook. And I can speak for your daughter because I know her. And she likes to have a workbook and she likes to write. So, she's allowed to do that. I've seen her.
Yeah, no, I advocated for that because it's just, it's just not, you know? Tempting.
Thank you for sharing.
Well, thank you.
And thank you for coming. Our door is always open, so.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Appreciate your time. All right. Now, we are going to move backwards to our school committee item, which is the superintendent's end-of-year evaluation. I did only get it to Jason this morning and I asked him to put a copy in everyone's. And this is really raw. It's printed from the way it calculates from everyone entering. So, I just want to explain what you're actually looking at because the way it prints the comments, I'd have to scroll down on some of them. So, where you see like page three, there's one of two and two of two for comments. I just wanted to make sure everyone had all of those. So, I'm going to, I'm going to read the indicator and where Jason fell on the rating. I think what I will do is stop at the comments. And if anyone wants to read honestly their comment or a comment, I don't want it to look like I'm picking the comments that are being chosen to be read. So, I would appreciate people sharing some, even if it's not their own. But I won't, I won't pick which ones we share. So, standard one instructional leadership was 1B1. So, if everyone's on the first page, you'll see that Jason exceeded his.
So, Erin, before you do that, the, we are supposed to speak as, as a group. And so, once we give individual feedback as a survey, we're supposed to speak as a group. So, nobody should necessarily read their individual comment and identify it as such. I mean, if they read their own, that's, you know, I guess, okay, but they shouldn't, they shouldn't.
So, should we just read the ratings and no comments, Jane? I think that is what we did last year. I was just going to open it up for people to share.
Yeah.
Since it has to be done in public.
After seeing other comments, if people want to add something, I think they can. But again, we're, we are, we are evaluating him in one voice. And so, that's why we look at the aggregate of this.
Okay, so we're not going to read comments. I will just read the indicators with the ratings. And I guess I should also point out that if there were any outliers, which I did not see any, and I don't think Jane did either, you know, we would have removed the higher or the lower. But they did all seem to fall in as our one voice, as a, you know, a commonality for the rating. So, back to the indicators. We have student engagement, 1B1. Jason exceeded the indicator. 1B3, meeting diverse needs. Jason exceeded. Then the overall rating for standard one, we have as exceeded. Standard two, we did social emotional well-being, 2A3. And Jason exceeded 2A3. 2A4, student health and safety exceeded. Overall rating for standard two is exceeded. And just stop me if you have a question on the way I numbered these pages with the comments. Sorry. Student support, 3B1, exceeded. Family support, 3B2, exceeded. And the overall rating for standard three, exceeded. Standard four, commitment to high standards, 4A1, is met. Continuous learning of staff, 4D1, met. The overall rating for standard four is met. Professional practice goal exceeded. And then the district improvement goal, curriculum and instruction. I crossed off the wrong one, so I'm sorry. I apologize. Met. District improvement goal equity, significant progress. District improvement goal fiscal management, exceeded. Student learning goal, some progress. And I believe that is it. The rest is comments. And you had the opportunity to list any additional comments that, for a direction that you would like to see the district or Jason for next year. So, we can definitely discuss that as a group, right, Jane?
Yep.
Does anyone want to share comments or?
I could just have a question on what we're doing right now. How does, how does Jason have an opportunity to ask questions about comments made or ratings if we don't talk about our comments?
So, so.
Or give him any feedback? Right now, we just.
Comments in general. So, that's what I'm saying. We can't, I can't say that I feel Jason duh, duh, duh. As a group, people believe Jason blah, blah, blah. But Jason can see those, all of those comments. He doesn't know whose were whose. And that's, that was my point. It's like, we're not supposed to identify that this is how I feel, but this is a committee, how we feel. And Jason absolutely has the ability to ask any questions. And we have the responsibility to say, you know, kind of guidelines of where we think things are really strong, where we think we need to see improvement, what we want to keep on this for next year. You know, we have all of those general comments, but to get to, you know, I gave you a two because blah, 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 it's not, it's no longer your two. It's as a group, we, 62% of us said this.
I just feel like last year, we had more of a discussion. I mean, if I'm, I'm at home, I have no idea what we just did.
We read general comments. So, it was really up to, I know that, that Erin didn't want to do that, but that's really up to Erin.
I can. I have some highlighted. I just didn't want it to look like I picked and chose what was shared and what wasn't. I will say that, I mean, obviously, we all have a copy in front of us.
So, can I just ask a question though? Does the public, so, we just read a bunch of numbers and we talked about a bunch of standards. If I'm sitting at home, I have no idea what just happened.
Well, actually, they should because his goals are posted.
My question is, do they get a copy of this?
No. His goals have been posted on our website all year. And the standards and indicators have been posted all year, what, what he's been working on. We did the mid-cycle review in February. And so, the community as, as a whole, if they followed along with that, will know what these indicators and goals were and where we, where we ranked him on, on his work. But I will gladly share comments. Does everyone want to, me to read them in a summary? Anyone?
I don't know. I just felt like it was a more interactive process last year. I'll review the meeting. I'm good. I mean, if, if everybody has the information, Jason doesn't, I, I don't know. I thought this was a public evaluation, not, we could have just given them that.
All right, I'm going to go backwards.
Yeah, so, yeah, so Tammy, what I did was I read through every comment and I pulled out the general trends. So, I did read like parts of other people. I didn't read quite a bit. For every, every, you know, standard, I read, you know, what were the general things that people were saying? It might have been a sentence from one person and a sentence from others. So, yes, we, we, we did do that.
Okay. That was my recollection. I just felt like, I don't know. I mean, again, I'm the one in a hurry today.
Do you want me to go back and read them with the indicators?
I don't know that it's the best evaluation process for Jason.
Give a number, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, why give comments if you're not sharing them?
All right, so I'm going to go backwards.
Sorry, I don't know. I mean, I'm not the, I can't be the only person talking about it.
I get what you're saying because it was different last year. But, I mean, I think that the whole public evaluation thing is a little.
Well, it is, but it is what we're required to do. And I don't.
Right, no, I get that too. And I think. All right, I'm going to share a few.
We're required to share the indicators.
I'm going to share a few.
You can read the comments.
Just so, because we, because we don't post them. I mean, it is public. It's being said out loud publicly. So, I will go with the overall comments for each standard and I will pick a few. If anyone wants to add one in, if, please don't hesitate to stop me. So, overall rating for standard one, we had Jason had exceeded some of the general comments. Was Jason successfully guided BMRSD through a pandemic while always making face-to-face instruction the ultimate goal? We ranked among the top schools in the state for our structured learning time. BMR is moving into the 2122 school year with students having attended five days of full in-person instruction as well as having been able to return to some normalcy as the previous school year ended. Jason helped design summer programming that is aimed at engaging all students in addressing their levels of readiness as we move forward. Jason should be credited with steering the district in the right direction through such an unprecedented time. Dr. DeFalco has also exceeded expectations for meeting diverse student needs by addressing the academic and social emotional needs of our students in both in and out. I just lost my, in and out.
I think whoever might have made that comment might have.
Oh, is it not Phil Beadie? No, it's here. It's here.
I'm just guessing, but.
Both in and out of the classroom.
Out of the classroom. He and his team provided in-person instruction for our youngest learners and students with learning differences in order to increase engagement and better accommodate learning needs. His work with the Boys and Girls Club ensured that even during hybrid and remote learning, high expectations were being met and resources provided for students to continue learning. This work will continue over the summer with credit recovery opportunities, acceleration academies and skills-focused tutoring, as well as the collaboration with the Boys and Girls Summer Program. Some general comments for standard two, which we have him as exceeded. Despite this being an unprecedented year that no one could prepare for, I think we came out better in the end. Students, students' educational needs were balanced against the healthcare requirements of pandemic priorities. Standard three.
Erin, could you just say that, like, what the standard, like student support, just so that the comments.
So, I was, so, standard three, student support and family support.
Sure.
I'm reading them as a general for standard three. Available to families 24/7. Even though some may not have liked the approach, he was present and visible as much as he, as was humanly possible. Since day one of his tenure in the district, Jason has attempted to meet student needs. The lunch program, as well as multiple opportunities for additional academic support, is evidence. I do not know if any other school district who provided support on at-home days during the hybrid model. This is a strong area for Jason, always finding ways to keep families informed. If there were ever a year to show a superintendent's commitment to both student and family support, this, it was this one. Jason was in continuous contact with families in regards to their students' learning needs during a pandemic, providing meals to students, planning a summer program aimed at reaching the maximum number of students, looking to data to assess needs moving forward, all evidence of how well Jason supports students and families. The district under Jason's leadership continues to collaborate with families to address needs and communicate district goals. Standard four, commitment to high standards. And continuous learning of staff. And continuous learning of staff. Really saw a difference in staff commitment this year. The dedication of all was directed from the top. Many more people took on lead roles and ownership. It was really nice to see. Professional practice goal. Who would have ever thought a professional practice goal would include successfully manage our pandemic? The amount of boards and community members Jason had to collaborate with and beyond educational facilitation is most certainly countless. Then still, when he, we as a committee asked for more, he rose to it, more data, more communication. We asked him to prepare our schools for seamless transitions from remote school to hybrid school, back to in-person learning, and he did it. Focused on, I think I. He navigated this past school year. How do we safely get as many students back in the classroom as possible? The evidence shows his commitment to this with our ranking and amount of time for face-to-face instruction, the numbers of meals provided to families, the summer programming put in place to prepare students for the year ahead, modifying sports and extracurricular activities so they, that they were safely offered. Uh, district improvement goal for instruction. Um, several people mentioned focus schools. The presentation from focus schools has shown how the district is meeting this goal. Data from STAR assessments is being looked at, which shows commitment to this goal as well. It will help to guide instruction moving forward. Jason's evidence shows implementations of the literacy program. The focus school collaboration is impressive. I always enjoy Carrie Purcell's presentations. District improvement goal on equity. I, I believe we are a model district in this area. Bringing awareness to our district is step one. The work on equity is ongoing within the district as provided in the evidence. Jason and the leadership team dedicated time and energy to this work. Numerous materials were read and discussed. Jason also led discussions at levels higher than our district with his work on mass association of school superintendents and Worcester County superintendents. To have a superintendent not only working to improve equity within the district, but also in the county and state level adds to the evidence that we are meeting and exceeding this goal. Uh, did I already do fiscal management? My numbering is messing me up. Uh, COVID nine, fiscal management. COVID nineteen caused a lot of concern, but fortunately Jason and Matt watched the grants and other funding sources to allocate funds to cover the added costs of running our schools with the resources needed. Student learning goal. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm going to add some for fiscal management. Great collaborations with both towns, FinCom, Selectmen, and being ready and available at town meetings. Jason and Matt continue to do amazing job in this area. The increased conversations with stakeholders have made this process much smoother than past years. Student learning go, goal, hardier to measure this. While the evidence shows that some grade levels are making gains towards this goal, it shows that the district has a few concerning trends. I would like to see the district continue with this as a goal. The summer programming put in place will hopefully help students with the skills needed for this goal. This continues to be an area that is difficult to assess. We not, we have not had an opportunity to look at the data and compare apples to apples, as there have been many changing factors. The data continues to show grade-specific growth gaps. The leadership continues to attempt to address these, but the work must continue. And then for additional comments. So very proud of Jason at the helm of our district. We are well-served and are seeing continual growth for all. I think we can always continue to improve and empower students to work at their best. I believe Jason is doing a great job in the direction he has for the district. I would like to continue seeing it work to improve the curriculum offered, as well as work to include options for higher learners in our Math EOL programs, standards one A and one B. Also, the capital planning subgroup moving forward, standards three A one, three A two, might be goals moving forward. These are things we would look at for next year, um, for Jason's goals. I'd like to see many of the same goals in place to allow our staff and students to return to buildings and allow our regional agreement merger of elementary buildings to transition with curriculum and PLCs. Overall, I'm extremely happy with Jason's work. His strength and grit have kept us way above water through unprecedented times. Thank you, Jason, for all that you do. It does not go unnoticed. Would anyone like to add any comments?
Thank you for sharing.
Or read later tonight?
I think it's just important when you go on through an evaluation process to say why, to say why you're saying he exceeded or why he hasn't met. I think the why is the most important part of the evaluation, not just your rubric circled. That doesn't do anything for you. Thanks.
Any, any questions or comments from Jason?
Well, I definitely appreciate the feedback. I appreciate all the, the time, effort and energy that everybody has put into this. The leadership team, our teachers, our support staff, the school committee, our parents. I always feel that this is like a, an interesting process to go through, because as much as it's an evaluation of my work, my work is our work. So I think it's, you know, I, I've said this to the school committee before. These are your schools and you've hired me to do the best I can to make them the best they can. And so this part of the work is so important to me because I want to make sure that I'm getting the feedback on the direction that we're going, uh, you know, to make sure that, you know, the schools are, um, are, the conditions in the schools are set for the students and staff to really excel. And so that's, that's really important to me, to make sure that that, that work is happening, uh, for the kids that we serve and the towns that we serve. So I'm very grateful for the feedback. I definitely heard some and, and read some, some trends, patterns and trends that have emerged, particularly around some accelerated learning, uh, some work that needs to definitely continue and deepen around our student learning goal. I definitely see that, and that remains, I hope the committee and the community sees that, that has been my main focus since the very beginning, is to help kids learn as much as they can every single day. And that will remain my focus, other than safety, of course. Um, but, uh, so I definitely appreciate the feedback. In the comments around the student learning goals, you know, I, you know, the, the comment around the apples to apples, I'm really glad Aaron read that because that's right. Like, it's been tough. The past three years to try to measure like any level of, you know, uh, continuous academic progress has been next to impossible, because, you know, year one, it wasn't my data, right? So we were kind of starting there. Year two, we had a different MCAS. It was two-point-O or whatever it's called. Which is so unfortunate because the high school was at a hundred percent advanced and proficient on ELA. And then they changed the goalpost on us. And so we were at fifty-eight percent, like good grief, talk about a shift. But that's okay. And then we had the pandemic. So it's like, we keep getting these, um, kind of curveballs, but that's okay. I, and I, and I, you know, was discussing earlier today with, with Matt and Jill about, you know, even coming out of this. We're at the, we're at the point with our student achievement data where we're looking at subgroups within subgroups. I mean, we're looking at special education students that are pullouts, special education students that are inclusion, special education students that are partial inclusion and partial pullout and trying to figure out, you know, what are the models that work best? We're looking at, you know, how girls performed versus how boys performed, even though at the last meeting, Tim. We're looking at, at that level, our ELL students, um, you know, the, the kids that are transitioning in and that are transitioning out of special education. And so we're, you know, we're at a much deeper level with our reviewing of student performance. It, it's just going to be hard. You know, like, how do we measure how long it's going to take to come out of this? That's why there's so many things we're putting in place to try to get students back to at least where they were, so we can kind of propel them forward, if you will. So I really appreciate the time, effort and energy that everybody has put into this. I know it's a lot of work, um, but the feedback is so important. I, I will tell you specifically too, around the equity work, um, thinking a lot about, you know, how do we take, um, you know, this work to the next level and helping our teachers in our classrooms and students, you know, uh, think about this work. You know, and what does, you know, we say all the time, all means all. Well, what does that actually mean? How does that translate into teaching practices, learning practices, and how do we make our work in the classroom accessible for all students? And how do we help our students really have a better understanding of the world that we are actually living in? So that when they go to school, you know, they are, you know, or whether it's career or college and there are, they're sitting in classrooms or workplaces with people that don't look sound or resemble them or, 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 you know, family and friends in BMR, it's not a shock to them. How do we prepare them for that world outside of our four walls so that we don't have alumni, like I've had, uh, come to me and say, I wasn't prepared for this. I was sitting next to kids at Northeastern. I didn't have any idea where the country was that they were from. I didn't have any idea what their religions were. I had no clue what was going on with their cultures. Like, you didn't prepare us for this. I can, I can tell you, we've had a lot of those conversations. So, but how do we do it in a way that helps people feel safe? To be able to engage in that work? Um, so, you know, the equity work is, is critically important. So I'm very appreciative of the support and the time, effort and energy, uh, from our school committee, from our leadership team, our staff. Because I will say, I think we are rowing more or less in the same direction and trying to get the district where it needs to be. Uh, and it's, you know, if we thought it was going to take a team effort to get us through the pandemic, I actually think it's going to take even more so of that to get us out of it. Because there's a lot of, a lot of return and recovery and acceleration work that has to happen. So I will very much take these, I will reflect on this. I've already bulleted some key pieces of some next steps and, um, as we think about our goals for next year, how that will, and those will take shape, so that I bring something to the committee in the fall that makes sense and that is an extension of where we were, uh, last year. So thank you.
So, um, next on the agenda would be our school committee forum, and then we are going to move into executive session to finish the conversation on the evaluation. So any committee items? Jane, anything?
Uh, no, but we are moving into executive session to negotiate contracts, not to continue the discussion on evaluation. Evaluation has to be done publicly.
Any public forum, any committee items for public forum?
I just, I, I just have one thing. Um, when Jason was talking about, first, firstly, the first thing Jason said that is the reason I like Jason, is that, um, you know, he referenced this as his, as our goals. And, um, I think that's important. Like this, this is, while it's Jason's direct evaluation, this whole process is also sort of us looking at what we have set as our goals through Jason. And, you know, what do we want, where do we want this district to go? And so I, Jason continues to keep that over-encompassing view of things and, and it's so cool how he does it. Um, the other thing is with, with respect to the equity and to Tim's, I, I watched last week's, last time's meeting and with the boy-girl thing. The boys, that has to be part of not only that equity conversation, but also the student learning goal. And I'm a teacher and I will tell you that I, I'm a, I'm a girl mom. I have two daughters. Um, but when I speak to high school parents about boys and their learning and their process, I cannot tell you how many, well, he's a boy. Boys will be boys. Like, that's not okay. These boys still have to get a job. They have to work and they have to compete. And we have to continue to figure out how to meet them, just like we do with our students on individual education programs, IEPs. We meet them where they're at. We have to meet boys where they're at in a way that we can encourage learning and, and let them rise to the top like it appears our girls are. So I think that, that boy conversation, the gender learning process needs to be part of our conversation in the equity piece and also the student, student learning piece because I, I, I think some of it is just society, like. It's funny, we, we have, sorry, Tim, we have that thought at this level, but then those boys become, you know, higher paid and all of that at the end, but we lose some of that. And I just, there shouldn't be a gap like that. So just, that's it for me.
Tammy, I, I agree with you completely. I'm, I'm a boy dad with a daughter. I have four sons and a daughter. And it was imperative to me to make sure that all of my children moved through school and learned as much as I could. Having said that, I have a child that wants nothing to do with education and the school system he was in made sure that he graduated. And if it weren't for the school system he was in, he would not have graduated because his thought process on school is, I know more than the teacher does. And I, I, that, that is such a boy mentality. But at the same time, how do we address that? How do we provide mentors for boys and girls across the, the spectrum to provide what they need, the encouragement they need, so that they can grow equally?
I think there's even more to that though, is that we take the boys and girls who are ready for more.
Yes.
Because I have two girls and a boy. And my boy, I feel like is constantly missing that extra. Like, he could still, and while he's still young, keep pushing it so that he doesn't hit that gap where we tend to lose the boys.
Mm-hmm.
So I think there's, there's just a lot of work still to go on with that.
There's, there's got to be some, some effort to push forward, you're talking about your son, to push forward those students, male or female, that, that meet the goals, meet the criteria, and then sit in class twiddling thumbs. And if we don't grab that group, as you say, Carrie, they will be lost and they'll lose their zest for education.
Okay. Any other committee public forum?
Totally off topic. I had a parent ask me today if we have any open houses planned for incoming ninth graders.
So we actually, on Wednesday, our leadership team is finalizing all of our open house dates. The meet the teacher nights, parent-teacher conferences, all of that will be finalized on the twenty-second, that's actually Thursday at nine AM.
Perfect.
So that info will be coming up very soon.
So in conjunction with that, um, and again, this is probably going to be an August agenda item. Masks, things being normal. Are lockers going to be used again? Do we know where that stands?
Uh, we haven't had that conversation yet. Yeah.
If, if they are, I think it's important to include seventh graders in this building because they never experienced that last year. So just.
Okay.
If, if there's any kind of, I mean, they, they never had that open door day or the use of things like that in this building.
So, so at some point, we need to revisit our protocols and policy, COVID policies. Because we, you know, we may still be, need to be three feet apart. We may still, you know, in the younger grades, so all of those policies are still in effect. They didn't disappear. Um, they're still, they're actually old polit, the policies we created for COVID are still in effect until we take them out. So.
So should we have that on the August, August agenda, Jane?
Yeah. Yep.
Does that, Jane, does that include the athletic fees? The modified fees for athletics? Do you know?
Technically, we didn't put an end date, so technically.
Well, I, I think we, I think when we put that in, we specified certain sports, if I recall correctly.
I did hear that a neighboring community is not having athletic fees.
Trying to get their, their, their teams full again, attracting kids that may have not played last year.
Bring that up.
Yeah. So we'll need to, we'll, we'll need, because we didn't do that right away. We didn't do it in the fall, I don't think. So we'll need to revisit that in August as well.
I made a, I wrote all that down, Jane, so I can put a draft agenda together for you.
Thank you.
To look at. Yep.
All right. Any other?
Carrie? If, if we're still at the three feet.
If, if we're still at the three feet apart, that doesn't have anything to do with our classroom sizes, right? We're good to go with that?
No, it'll be fine.
Okay. So I'll be looking for a motion to move into executive session for contract negotiations. And this will be a roll call, and we will not be returning to, we will adjourn from our executive session. So we will not be returning.
I so move?
Second.
Okay. Motion me by Tim, second by Tammy. Amanda?
Yes.
Yes.
Tammy, yes. Jane?
Yes.
Aaron, yes. Tim?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Provided somebody carries me there.
Takes you with us.
You can carry your head into the meeting, Jane.
I, I wish I was like a mom.